Okay.
Good evening, everyone. This is the special joint meeting of the Village of Austin Board of Trustees and the Town Council of the Town of Austin with regard to the Community Development Block Grant Applications and Presentations by not-for-profit groups. Let's call ourselves to order. Can we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll take attendance from the village side. Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee Kazada.
Present.
And Mayor Levin.
Present.
And from the town side, we have Councilmember Shaw.
Present.
And Supervisor Levin.
Supervisor Levinberg.
Levinberg.
I apologize.
And Councilman Feldman has joined us as well.
Okay, and Councilperson Feldman as well.
Present.
Okay. Martha, I'll hand it back to you.
Yes, sorry. Thank you so much. I just got in. Thank you so much. So we're going to move on to welcome and introductions by Mayor Levin and Supervisor Levinberg. Do you guys have any welcoming words to say?
Sure. Dana, you want to go first?
Okay.
Why not? It doesn't matter.
I had that you were going first, so you go ahead. You want me to go? Okay, sure. Anyway, good evening, everyone, and thank you to members of the Village Board and the Town Board for collaborating with us this evening to host this meeting to benefit Austin's local not-for-profits. We're holding this meeting tonight to provide these dedicated nonprofits the opportunity to fulfill their public engagement requirements as part of their Community Development Block Grant applications. Looking at the agenda, I can't wait to hear more about these exciting projects for our most important stakeholders. The Town and Village are proud to be active participants in Westchester County's Urban County Consortium, which allows municipal and nonprofit entities in our community to access these federal dollars through the Westchester County Planning Department. Although we are not going to be discussing them in detail tonight, the Town and Village are pursuing projects of our own for this cycle, and in the town, our projects will focus on improving the infrastructure at our beloved Lewis Engel Waterfront Park, which serves both town and village residents. Please stay tuned for our Town Board meetings in June as we expand on the details of our application. CDBG allows each applicant to apply for up to $1 million in grant funding each four-year round, so collectively, we have the potential to receive up to $5 million in grant funding for Austin, and with our match, up to $10 million invested in our community. While we know that it's unlikely that that's actually going to be the final number for this round, it does illustrate the importance of this grant program and our collective potential for our community. So I do want to just take a moment to introduce the town's representative to the county's Community Development Advisory Group, and that is the Honorable Richard Wishney. Richard is here tonight along with Catherine Cusby to certify that all of you have satisfied your outreach requirements. Richard has quite a bit on his plate right now with his recent appointment as Acting Commissioner of Emergency Services for Westchester County, so we are very grateful that he's here with us tonight to participate in this important meeting, and I turn it over to you, Mayor Levin. Thank you.
Thank you. I welcome everybody. Part of the process, I'm not going to repeat everything that Supervisor Levinberg said, I'll say ditto to that. Thank you for explaining it so eloquently. Simply put, nonprofits and each of our taxing municipalities, the Town, the Village, are putting in for grants that vary in size, etc., as was already stated. This is part of the process. Call it, you know, due process in the sense that the public should know what their representatives, including their and their nonprofits, are asking from the state as far as monies for improvements of all kinds. There's not much I can add, except that I'm looking forward, as I'm sure everyone in the gallery is looking forward to hearing from nonprofits, the exciting ideas that they want to put forth, and take a moment to thank nonprofits for doing as much as they do in our community. And thank Catherine Cusby, and I know I don't pronounce your name right, and I'm so sorry, and you can correct me, for being our rep as well in this process. This is a great example of, it takes a village, and I guess a town, to support a village and a town, and it's not just government, it's government working with nonprofits to better all concerned. So with that, I am going to go to, Catherine, I don't see your face on here, but I know you're in the gallery, so I appreciate the time that you're putting into representing us as well. I turn this back to Martha to continue the agenda for the meeting.
Okay, so we're going on to nonprofit CDBG applications, starting with IFCA Interfaith Council for Action on 138 Spring Street, Austin, New York, 10-5-6-2, and we have Executive Director here, Jackie Shaw, to speak about.
Evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm going to share my screen. Hopefully that works. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so good evening again. My name is Jackie Shaw, and I am the Executive Director of Interfaith Council for Action, doing business with IFCA Housing Network. I also serve on the Town Board as council, as you've noticed, and I'm going to take that hat off for a minute and put on my IFCA hat. In this presentation, I will tell you a little bit about IFCA, give you an idea of the proposals that we are trying to get funding for, and then answer any questions the boards may have, and of course, stick around for the other presentations to see if there are any questions from the public. Sorry. So IFCA's mission is sustaining community diversity and opportunity through affordable workforce housing and vital social services. IFCA, again, is located on 138 Spring Street and is the oldest neighborhood preservation organization in Westchester County. IFCA was incorporated in 1968 as a nonprofit 501(c)(3) charitable organization, and has evolved to become a leading nonprofit developer and manager of affordable workforce housing. IFCA now includes 15 properties comprising of 92 units, 86 in Austin and six in Tarrytown. As a neighborhood preservation program participant, it has been a leading force in the ownership, rehabilitation, and management of affordable workforce housing in the Village of Austin. Majority of people whom IFCA serves are the working poor. Many tenants are employed in jobs that do not pay a living wage. Others hold two jobs and still are unable to afford decent housing. IFCA fills that gap so that people who want to stay in the community or people who want to move into the community have an option that they can afford. So the first proposal we have, it was for our building in Tarrytown, and I presented it to the Tarrytown Board last week, and I run you through our second, third, and fourth proposals, which are all in the Village of Austin. Up first is 2 James Street. We will be applying for roof that needs to be done. We've had some leaks in the roof, and it's been patched, but it's just kind of an interim fix, so the roof definitely is a high priority for us because we like to get it done. We don't want any more damage there, and we're not really sure how long the patch will last. There are five units, and the 2 James Street funding request for that is $28,000. Next up is 65 Hunter Street, which is adjacent to 2 James. The roof there is at its useful life, it's just somewhere around 20 years old, and the chimney is also having some issues. And in front of 65 Hunter, there is a retaining wall, and if you're fixing it, the left side of it is beginning to crumble, so we'd like to kind of nip that in the bud before the whole wall goes down. So for the roof and chimney, it's about $38,000, and for the retaining wall repairs, it's about $12,000, for about $50,000 total for this site. This has three units. Our last proposal is for 223 Spring Street. This is a building that has six units, and each unit has its own kind of HVAC boiler system, so the funding for that is about $65,000, and that's really all we're looking to do at 223 Spring Street at this time. So the total funding request for this CDBG application is somewhere around $400,000. I'll stop my share.
Are we doing questions now, or are we doing other presentations and then questions at the end?
I have no idea.
I think we should do each presentation, because they're all so different, I would think.
Okay. I guess I do have a quick question.
Sure.
Just wondering if you had considered the Energy Smart Homes program for a different type of HVAC for the HVAC project, because, you know, there's a lot of better, more efficient types of energy systems right now for that, and we have that program that's going.
We're exploring a few options. We have till June 25th to do the CDBG and to kind of finalize the who, the what, and the where. We might turn, if we could get something, another funding for the HVAC, we might turn Will D into two proposals and are done there. So we're still trying to finalize pricing and figure out what's the best course of action.
Okay, I would, I'll definitely just try to connect you with the people at Energize also for the peace funding, because there is funding for energy improvements that might be able to be paired with the CDBG.
Awesome.
Okay, and also sustainable Westchester, so one or the other or both, okay? Just, we'll talk offline about that.
Okay, I'm making a note, so I'll get back to you on that. Thank you.
You stole my whole show here. I was going to talk about if you're going to do the ruse, because Dana and I have just been involved with sustainable Westchester. If you do ruse these days, you got to also look, because they now have solar panels that are built in, etc. You don't want to do twice.
Right.
And because there's funding from two streams, you might get lucky, who knows?
Thanks, Jackie. It's Omar here. I have questions for you. One is if there's any sense of priority with these projects, and then two is, if you could say a little bit more, because I don't know of how the process works, if you have a person or company in mind to do this work already, or if you get the funding, do you then do an RFP or something similar to price out who would do it?
The first question, priority, the work would be our priority, but we haven't really done a lot of work in Tarrytown. Mostly when we get funding, we have the Austin buildings, so that's a building that hasn't had any major renovations in about 20 years. So Will D would be the priority, 2 James group, since it's leaking, would be number two, and then we'd figure out three and four. The second question was...
The second question is, do you have somebody in mind, or do you do an RFP?
Okay. So the reason I don't have firm numbers, we're getting three estimates for everything to try to figure out what's the best way to do that now, and then we'd have to go do it again, because if we're doing, the funding is over three years, so no contractor is going to hold their price for three years, so we need to at least have an idea who we would like to go with and have that plan in place. And then going forward, we would be using that person, getting another estimate based on current pricing, whatever it is in 2022, 2023, or 2024, depending on when we're doing it, and then go forth in that direction.
Thank you.
Hey. Anybody else? It's sort of interesting when the Town, the Village does it, because I don't know who's chairing this meeting. I don't know how to begin or start any conversations. I'm at a total loss. We should have called each other five minutes before this meeting. We'll take turns. Okay.
Is that it? Is there anybody else? Nope. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thanks IFCA for everything they do in our community.
You're here. You stole what I was going to say.
Ah, well, there you go.
Okay, moving on to the second not-for-profit. It's the Austin Children's Center located at 32 State Street, and they're going to talk about public service projects, and it's going to be presented by the Director of Development, Sean Kibari.
You're on mute. Sean, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Thank you, and thank you for arranging this joint meeting for us to be able to present our projects. I think most of you know the Austin Children's Center is one of the oldest daycare centers in the country. We were founded in 1895, and we've always been on the cutting edge of childcare. We are one of a handful of centers that have received a four-star quality rating from New York State, and we take care of infants starting at age eight weeks, toddlers, preschoolers, and we also do before and after-school care for school-age youngsters in kindergarten through grade seven. And then in the summer, we're a full-time summer camp program. We're also open on school holidays and vacations to meet the needs of working parents. Most of you know, we moved into a gorgeous new facility at 32 State Street, which is absolutely beautiful, and I invite you all to come for a tour. Because of COVID, we're not able to invite you during the day when the children are there, but we are doing tours on the evenings and weekends, and so if you're interested in coming, shoot me an email at sean, S-H-A-W-N, at OCC-NY.org, and we'll show you around to the site. We currently have 150 children enrolled, which has been our enrollment over the last several years in our former sites. We had two Victorian houses on Route 9, and we rented space at the Austin United Methodist Church. Our new building has capacity for 70 additional children, and once COVID limitations are lifted, we would be able to serve that many children. And of course, part of our mission is very much about making our high-quality program affordable for all working families, including low- and moderate-income working families. So our first proposal to CDBG is for tuition assistance for low- and moderate-income families. We would be applying for $75,000 a year for three years, so the full amount of that proposal would be $225,000. And we would be providing the matching funds from, mostly from Department of Social Services funding, and also some private funding from our own donors. So that's the first proposal, and that's really the heart and soul of our mission. The second proposal is for enrichment programming. And, you know, many of our youngsters don't have the opportunity to participate in, to see live performances, to participate in art classes, and we also want to start at our new site, a gardening program. We had gardening at 90 South Highland Avenue, so we are putting together a program of enrichment classes for our youngsters. So those are the two. Oh, and that, the enrichment program would be $25,000 a year for three years, so that would add up to $75,000. So those are our two proposals. Does anybody have questions for us?
Hi, Sean. I'll start. So, full disclosure and excitement, my daughter's going to start at OCC in the fall.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
How old?
She's 23 months, and so she'll be like a little over two and a half when she starts. Yeah, very exciting. So my question is about the first proposal. I wonder if you can quantify how many families that would impact, roundabout?
Right. It's, it kind of depends on, we have, it amounts to a sliding fee scale, the way we figure out the scholarships, but if we would say the average scholarship is $5,000, so that would impact 15 families, give or take.
Thank you.
My only question is, are they two separate applications that you're doing? Are you going to, like, pair 75 and 25, so you're asking for the tuition assistance and the enrichment, like, per year?
So... I think, based on our conversation with the guys in the planning department, we're going to, the scholarships will be one proposal for three years, and the enrichment programming will be another, you know, a separate proposal for three years. I do have to confirm that with them, but the last time we talked about it, that was the way they suggested that we present it.
Okay, and my only other question was the DSS funding that was the match, is that considered state or federal funding? Because I thought sometimes they don't like federal funds matching federal funds, so that was another question.
That, right. We also cleared that with the guys at the planning department, so they said it was okay.
Fantastic. As long as you get thumbs up from them, you get a double thumbs up from me.
Very, as you know, they are very helpful. They're about the most friendly funding agency that you can deal with, so.
Absolutely. We're all working together in this, so thank you, Sean. Great proposal. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Martha?
Okay, moving on to our last not-for-profit. It's the Galata House located at 1772 North State Road, number 175, Briar Cliff Manor, and they're going to be talking about public service projects, and it's going to be presented by President and founder Matt Galata.
Good evening. Can you everybody hear me?
Yes. Hi, Matt.
Hi, good evening. I'm Mayor Rick Levin, Supervisor Levinberg, and Town Board and Village Board. My name is Matthew Galata, the president and founder of Galata House. We'll be six years at the end of May, which has gone by really fast, and we're a nonprofit helping area residents in Westchester who face a hardship, and we don't care what your income level is, we care what the hardship is. We do a one-time help, and we have community advisors that get the request through the email or through Facebook or phone calls, and it gets resubmitted through an email through the website, and then the board members vote on the applicant's needs, if we can do it or not. And we first started doing area residents with people with disabilities and car fires and maintenance on the cars, and giving away three cars today, computers, really anything except for mortgages and rent. We will try to find a need for the person or family looking for help. March 2020, things changed. We were providing meals at CLC every Thursday. We did that for a year and a half, and it just so happened, the week that COVID hit, that Thursday, we brought the foods outside, and about 120 meals, we started at that day. We have been continuing since March of 2020 over 140,000, so let me repeat that, 140,000 meals. We have grab-and-go, including that, is 40,000 delivered, specifically to Sleepy Hollow, Tarrytown, Austin, Croton, and some of Briar Cliff, meals on a regular basis every Tuesday and Friday. We're county, we're all throughout the county, so we've been in every single municipality, and we've helped almost every single municipality. We get our major funding through donations and events, which I'm appreciative of. A lot of you that are watching this right now have donated to, and we give it right back to the community so we can do what we do. This grant, this CBG proposal tonight, is specifically only for Austin, and we are fortunate that we received money from the United Way to use to Westchester County, $9,000. We've got $4,500 at the beginning of the year. We got another grant through MBIA to help hospital workers only, it's very specific, the hospitals and their workers, which we're kicking off this week. We're excited about that. And then we have another grant from Old Fellows and helping disability people with disabilities specifically. Westchester County gave us a grant of $80,000 last year, which we used every single penny, and I believe we're the only organization that used every single penny, and they appreciated that, so it showed that there was a need. We were at four municipalities, Pleasantville, Briar Cliff, Austin, and Somers, $20,000 each, and I believe we're the only organization chosen to do that many municipalities. We had the manpower and the volunteers to do it, and thank goodness. So getting back to Austin. Austin, since the pandemic, from March to December, every Friday, we're outside Austin Stop &amp; Shop, and I appreciate some of the volunteers that are on this club, leaders in the community and trustees. You got to see it firsthand, and that's what Galata House really wants people to see, is what we do firsthand during volunteering, to see the anguish on the people's faces, to see the children in the backseat of the car, seeing the families with the tears in their eyes, saying thank you, seeing the desperation. Food insecurity is real. I've witnessed it. I was part of it, and now with the help of a lot of organizations and churches and other nonprofits and community members have rallied with us as one, so it's not just really Galata House and certain, we partner up, which I love to do, and give out more food. So on Tuesdays, I'm sorry, on Fridays, a lot of people may not know, because I don't really publicize it too much, but we have, since March of last year, we have delivered every Friday to homebound people who are sick, seniors quarantined, families who can't get out. Truly amazing. That effort was initiated with Beth Sniffin and her family, and kudos to Beth Sniffin, because it's amazing, amazing procedure. We buy the fried chicken at Stop &amp; Shop, and then we buy rotisserie chickens for families, and we have six to 15 volunteers driving throughout Austin on Friday afternoons, Friday evenings, delivering the food. 140 meals, which we are currently doing now for the last couple of weeks, that's had plateaued about 140. That equals about 45 families, and then we do grab-and-go, which a lot of you have seen, and that's where we are outside of Stop &amp; Shop, and we announce it, and now we have people coming. We did that every Friday from March to December. In January, I decided to do it every other Friday, because funds were getting low, and we haven't missed every other Friday since January. So thank goodness for our volunteers. That's $8 a meal from local restaurants, so it's $8 a meal, which comes to about 225 meals, which comes to about $1,800 for remaining six months, would be $10,500. We're going to be asking for $64,000 for the three years. We don't really see delivering every Friday as things get better. I think the numbers will go down, but we will still see a need for it, and that's what we're going to be asking for, for Friday evenings, grabbing go meals, which cars and residents walk up or drive up outside of Stop &amp; Shop, and we provide the hot meal. The grabbing, the food delivery meals is a cheaper price point, and it's roughly $5 a meal, and it's $700 a week, approximately $4,200 for the next six weeks, and $10,500 for 30 weeks. So we're going to ask for a total of $85,000 for the three years, which will go quick, but we're going to do it during times where we believe the months where people really need it, and we haven't missed a beat. A lot of you have seen it firsthand. Money last year was our biggest year. Everybody should know. Thank you very much. We raised over like $220,000, and a lot of that went right to the food. We were doing about $8,000 to $10,000 a week on food, giving out food. Truly amazing concept, and we partnered with a lot of nonprofits, a lot of organizations in town, and it was beautiful. So if there's any questions, I would love to answer any and all your questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Galata, for all that you have done for our many communities throughout Westchester. It has been It has been a yeoman's effort, and we know that it's all volunteers that you basically have helping you every week. And it's really quite amazing, and also being able to serve the local restaurants at the same time. So really, very grateful to you. So you had mentioned at the beginning some of the other funding sources that you've gotten. Is that what you're planning to use for the match, or are you Matt, are you just gonna be raising additional dollars for the match?
We're gonna be raising additional dollars for the batch. The, if we, we are in the, in the, in the running right now for a county grant. And we allocated 8,000 dollars of that grant for Austin. And that's gonna start in June. That should be over in six weeks. So hopefully, we'll raise around $30,000 to $40,000. And, you know, like, the county will match that, and our, our, you know, that's, that's exactly how we're gonna do it. And we'll do it. And it's not, it's not gonna be every single week, because of, because of the funding. I mean, how much money can people actually keep on giving, right? But we're gonna make a huge dent like we always do.
The only other question I have is like, with CDBG, usually you have to prove the low, moderate income level. You know, you stated at the beginning that you, you don't look at how people, what people's incomes are, but for this particular program, that is something that the county looks at specifically to qualify for the, for the hot money. So I'm just wondering if there's a way that you can, you know, direct some of this to possibly the disabled community or your seniors, because then they would automatically qualify.
Great question. Actually, the grant that we're gonna be in a running for, Austin, and I'll just mention Sleepy Hollow, but, but Austin, it's like 87% of all of Austin is in that low-income modification map. They told us the website. We got the maps. We submitted it to them with the streets and the address. We actually have addresses, Dana. So we have 145 names and addresses of people that we deliver to, so that helped us out a lot. We compiled that with Beth. And then because Stop &amp; Shop is, is in a part of the area where Austin, the low, mid, midcome, like you just mentioned, demographics, all of the side streets and the streets all around there are right in our demographic where we're giving out food. So we met that hands down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for what you do.
Hi, Matt. Hi, Matt. It's Liz.
How are you? Good evening.
I am, just got here from work. Anyway, my question is, how many restaurants are helping you at this point?
For just, for Westchester County, or specifically Austin?
Specifically Austin. And are these the same restaurants you're gonna be using to continue to provide the food?
To answer your question, there's six restaurants that we're using. We've always asked other restaurants, they couldn't fit in our price point, and that was per the county at $8 a meal. So if they can't do it, I'm terribly sorry that they can't, but we have to do, we have to go with restaurants that can fit that $8 a meal, right? So we'll be opening up to other restaurants, because a lot of them have opened up to us to say they wanna try to help, like 10510. So we'll be, we'll be using them this year. But it's Ruffino's, Tasty Table, Westchester Stationery, Terra Restica. And I think, I think that's it for right, whether or not. The problem is, is that a lot of the food prices, people really don't understand. The containers went up about 80 cents, just a container. So we, everything we do is food ready to go. So we have special containers that we use, and then the chicken and the meat. But forget about just the meat. The chicken right now has skyrocketed. So the public, if you've noticed, it's like they're adding $2 on a chicken leg, or $20 on a platter, a tray of chicken parmigiana. Some chicken has really went up, and that was our go-to meal, chicken, because we can mix it with a lot of different meals for our different demographics. So food prices are rising, container prices are rising, but yet we're still asking for the minimum. So it's, you know, it's gonna be, it is what it is.
All right. Well, thank you for all the good work that you do. It's definitely appreciated.
Thank you for volunteering.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I don't have a question. I just wanna thank Matt, because Galata House was a lifeline for some of our families, particularly last March, April, and May, families that were down with the virus. And those meals delivered to the homes really were lifesavers. So, yeah, it's incredible. I don't know how you do it, Matt. It's unbelievable, the volume of that. But just wanna say thank you. You're wonderful.
You're quite welcome, and I appreciate your cards, and I appreciate you helping our community. But you hit, you hit a great point. I do believe, and I do see, delivering the meals is gonna be more of a, more than what I anticipating now. I think the pandemic, you know, it's, it is what it is, but I think more people are gonna be staying home this year, and we're gonna have to deliver more, delivering meals. So we're ready for it.
Well, thank you, Matt. I enjoyed being out there. I think Stop &amp; Shop also has been really helpful in the whole. They really deserve a lot of credit for creating the space, which is also a challenge, right? And I think they also do a lot of the chicken. I mean, they're just been tremendously helpful, and I just want to make sure they get the credit they deserve, as, as do you and all of your wonderful volunteers. Good luck.
Thank you. So how does this work? Do we stay on the call the whole thing, or do people email questions?
I don't think you need, I think when we, we'll, we'll close the meeting at some point. This is part of the responsibility. I don't know if Richard or Catherine want to add anything, since they're the reps, to sort of just add their two cents worth. But it's a presentation to both boards, and that's, I think, the responsibility. When we close the meeting, we close the meeting. I don't think, people can always ask you questions, but as far as this part of the process, that's basically what there is. But I don't know if Richard or Catherine want to say a word or two, since they're the reps.
Yeah. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So, you know, listening to the three presentations, it just makes you so proud of living in this community, for all of us. We've all just been through the worst times of our lives, and all of these folks step up, and a lot more. There are other, other local organizations that have really done so much good work. So yes, very proud of the community. I'm hopeful that all of these projects will be funded. And I know that we'll be fighting hard to represent our communities and support these applications to the best of our ability.
Thank you.
And we thank you for that.
Awesome.
And Catherine, did you, nobody's forcing. I just wanted to give you guys the space, you're the reps, and to let people know what.
So I just wanted to say, I look forward to hearing all the, the projects. It's always exciting to hear new projects. And if you guys ever need to reach out to me, because I do know, once your applications are done, you do need our signatures, you can contact me. And that's k m q, you at gmail.com, and I could always send it out if you guys want. And yeah, and we could meet up and I can look over the application, and we can go that way.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Do we need to open this up to the public? I'm not 100% sure, just since I know we held it as a public town hall meeting, so.
I do believe we have public comment on the, on the agenda for public comment on these projects.
And just before we organize that, I was remembering.
So what I can do is invite the, the people that are in the audience, that are attendees. If there's anybody that's interested in saying something, or that you'd like to provide public comment, you just need to raise your hand, and I will bring you over to speak. So we'll give you a couple minutes, minute, whatever it is, and if you should raise your hand, then I can bring you over.
As you're doing that, I just want to add one more thing, which was that, in addition, Sean was mentioning how Galata House had helped out with their, you know, clients. And also, we had a little, some little downtime with our senior program in the town, and, and Galata House also stepped up and helped us get some meals delivered to our seniors during that week. So we are very appreciative.
Thank you.
So our current attendees that are on here have not raised their hands.
This is, for the two of you that are on there, this is our usual, East in the Village, couple-minute stall, to give everybody the opportunity to find the little hand on the bottom of your screen, so we don't miss out. But I think.
You think those two people are pros, and they know how to find that hand?
Yes, they are.
If they haven't raised it, they're good.
There is. That's it. Okay, Martha.
Okay, Ben, can I just have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting?
Does each board vote, Stuart, in that, or is it just like a going around?
Mayor from the village is in. We need a motion to adjourn to executive session for reasons of personnel regarding a specific person.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
Martha?
All in favor?
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
And then for the town?
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. And I'm guessing all in favor? Aye. Aye. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for joining us.
See the village folks in a few minutes.
Bye-bye, all. Everybody. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.